This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for August 3rd, 2020. In accordance with social distancing requirements, Governor Prisker's Executive Orders 2020-43 and 2020-44 in Section 17 E of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, this meeting will be held virtually. See, I have a roll call, please, and a reminder, too, that this is also being recorded. Roll call, please. Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Vivier?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Goodman?
Here.
Alderman Chrisell?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
Thank you, Emily. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. As in the past, I will say it aloud here and ask you to follow with me silently, although you're invited to follow with me here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will now have citizens' comments. We have some folks who've come to the meeting tonight. Our procedure is, I ask you to come up with a diet, introduce yourself, give your address, and say your piece. Yes? I hope you're patient. I'm sorry. We're going to have to backtrack for just a moment. No problem, Emily. I'm sorry. I apologize. Treasure Brunner?
Treasure Brunner is here.
City Attorney Brooke Lenneman?
Here.
City Administrator Coakley?
Here.
Assistant City Administrator White?
Here.
Chief Terrell? Finance Director Dolstran?
Here.
Community and Economic Development Director Mensur?
Here.
And Deputy Public Works Director Kukler?
Here.
Thank you. No problem, Emily. I forget at least one thing every meeting, so I'm sorry. All right, back to our citizens' comments. For this evening, we have three folks who signed up. Again, if you wish to come up, as I call your name, come to the podium, introduce yourself, and then give your message to the public. We'll begin with Mitchell Adamus, and then Pam Spiebeck, and then Bob Seaver.
Could I switch with Pam?
Sure.
Sure. Yeah?
Oh, okay.
She brought me here.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, what do I do now?
Right over to the podium, and there's a microphone. And then speak close to the microphone, so that people can hear you at home. Absolutely.
Good evening.
Go closer to the microphone. Yeah, as close as you can. You can hold it if you like. As close as you can.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing my comments on the proposed Mack Road Bike Plan Multi-Use Trail. My name is Pam Spiebeck. I live at 29 West 630 Mack Road on the north side. When I attended the only public open house regarding this issue in October 2017, the city presumed that it had all the right-of-way needed for this bike path to go along the north side of Mack Road between Lake Marsh and Route 59. Upon closer examinations and confirmed bike surveys, it now appears that the trail will need to acquire easement or ownership of private property. I would like to suggest that Warrenville design and build this trail on the south side of Mack Road, where the land is entirely owned by the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County. They are a proven partner in many safe and beautiful trail systems, connecting people with nature and desirable destinations. I object to a public trail that would necessitate five driveway crossings and dangerous proximity to 40 mile-per-hour traffic on a no-shoulder telly wall. Also, there are multiple utilities, both above and below ground on the north side, yet only a single underground utility exists on the south side. Please implement this project on the south side of Mack. It will make for a truly enjoyable trail ride, a less dangerous particular experience, and a compromise that's fair to everybody. I encourage you to come out and look at the existing landscape and layout of the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Greetings, and thank you for your time. My name is Mitchell Adamus. I also live on Mack Road. Basically, Pam has given you a good idea, you know, as a synopsis of the overall picture. Hopefully, I can elaborate on some of the things. The easements is one of the issues. There is one pipeline issue on the south side, and the easy way to address that is to simply move the path a few speeds you're not on the easement. In order to mow my front of the lawn, I had to pull these flags. These are five different easements on our side of the property, including one here from the City of Warrenville about streetlight wires, but there's all sorts of buried cables, et cetera, et cetera, here. Five different easements on our side that would also impact the location of the bike path. So, to me, it makes a whole lot more sense to put the trail south in Forest Reserve, where you have a welcoming situation, instead of being intrusive on people's property on some of them, literally ten feet from one of our neighbors' garages. And plus, we have... Another issue is, people are saying, "Well, what about the ecology of the forest preserve?" Well, it is... I've been doing restoration for over 40 years now, and I can tell you, it's a nice woods, but it is quite mediocre, and you're really not going to be creating any substantial ecological impact in the woods. In fact, I could argue that my property has more diversity on it than the forest preserve itself. Another issue, a very valid issue would be the safety for the people using the path. On our side, you are crossing five driveways. On the south side, you would have to eventually find some way of crossing Mack Road. But I drive frequently on Williams Road and Batavia Road, and you have a wonderful blinking light system there. I see people on that path literally every time I go out there, and they do use the blinking light there. It's quite effective. The traffic slows down and stops. People cross the road. It's a wonderful system. So, you can simply incorporate that same blinking light system on Mack Road for the number of people that would want to cross Mack Road there. So, the easements, the ecology, the Forest Reserve District, all of these issues speak really strongly to the fact that the path does belong in a welcoming woods setting as opposed to intruding on people's property. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Bob Seaver will be called forth. A few months ago, Mr. Earhart called me to arrange a meeting. We met at my office. Mr. Earhart wanted to show me a plan he had for the Forty and Tremantis properties that border my property and also Stewart Ashauer's property. Immediately, I noticed that the lot sizes and the number of homes did not equal the numbers as stated by the City of Warrenville during a public hearing in 2009. Mr. Earhart then stated that the City of Warrenville was handling this issue. I then related to Mr. Earhart three economic reasons why this plan would not be profitable for him. A few weeks later, Mr. Earhart called and stated that he was not going to pursue this plan. Apparently, in this situation, the City of Warrenville presented one story during the public hearing in 2009, and a somewhat different story in 2019 to a developer. Thus, the City of Warrenville violated one of the fundamental principles of the political economy, that being citizens' lives matter, too. And the City of Warrenville should always remember this basic principle.
Thank you, Bob. I have no email comments to read this evening. I would remind you that once we conclude citizens' comments, there will not be another opportunity for public comment at the meeting. But we will now move on to the balance of our meeting, beginning with Mayor's comments. Just a couple of things tonight. One, a reminder to continue following the safety guidelines for the prevention of COVID-19. Wear your mask, wash your hands, and do your social distancing. This thing has not gone away. It's not destined to go away for some time. The best thing you can do is protect yourself. Also, for the folks in attendance this evening, when you're ready to leave, you can exit through the door right over there. You don't have to go back through state hall. It's easier to get out. And that's all I have for this evening. Kirk?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to let everybody know that Warrenville and Bloom finally has put out all the curb appeal signs, and we thank the 20, 25 people who worked on this for the past three weeks. And just a reminder that we only put out approximately 250 signs, and there are thousands of yards. So, if you didn't get one, it's... We either missed it, or sometimes it just doesn't qualify. If they're bigger or better or more impressive, maybe. We looked for lots of colors, and we found some beautiful yards, and we appreciate everybody working on their front yards as well as their backyards. What was interesting is, when the neighbor got a sign, then you went by, and the person next door was working on their yard. So, that person could give us their address next year, and hopefully they'll get a sign. So, appreciate it. Hope you enjoy the flowers. And when you drive through the streets, it's got a cone flower on the sign. It's about to just take on the stake. And we thank you for working on your property and improving beautification. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Treasure?
I'll report.
Thank you, Larry Alderman. We'll begin with Alderman Ashauer?
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Berry?
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Vivier?
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I just want to make everybody aware of the fact that there is a blood shortage, and if you are inclined and able to donate blood now, would be a really wonderful time. All of the big blood drive events that often happen in the summers are mostly canceled because of COVID-19, but you can still make individual appointments at LifeSource and other blood donation locations around DuPage County, so that you can go in individually, by yourself, and socially distance. So, I hope that you'll consider giving blood. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Chrisell?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Widener?
Yes, there was an interesting article in Friday, July 31, Chicago Tribune's Business section. I just thought I'd mention it. It's a $200 million project that's planned for the City of Naperville by Intercontinental Real Estate and Development. The site is located at the City Gate West, kind of over there by Whirlyball and Top Golf. It's being described as an art-inspired community on that 100-acre site. Besides being art-inspired, it will be a live-work-and-play-stay community, described by the Intercontinental Group that's developing it. And it'll include a 285-unit luxury apartment building, entertainment venues, two hotels with a total of 208 rooms, centered on being a destination for the public events, which will include art shows, sports events, concerts, and festivals. The developer, I guess, is going to join forces with the art group Naperville Century Walk to create an arts district on the property. The arts district in the City Gate West will be created in partnership with that Naperville art group, the Naperville Century Walk. They're going to move their headquarters over to that site, and the last quote in the paper was that "City Gate will be inspired by art," as opposed to it being an afterthought, where art comes after the fact or is required. So, I thought it was of interest and would be of interest to other members of the council and people attending this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson?
No comment.
Thank you. Okay, City Administrator?
Thank you. Two quick things. One, just to reiterate, the mayor was saying the request of the Page County Health Department to spread the word and encourage our residents to continue being diligent and follow all of the protocols to keep all of us safe, ourselves, our friends, our family, and our neighbors. And also, it does really help to... If we can not have to cause the state to roll us back into an earlier phase, it will help our businesses and help maintain jobs as well. There's also an economic factor besides just saving health and lives. The other thing, Emily, thank you for the reminder, because I don't know why I almost put my mind, but late last week, I think on Thursday, my wife texted me a picture of a little curb appeal sign in our front yard, which I was shocked, because I have seen many of your... And thank you very much. I appreciate it. We've done a lot of work. My son was home from school for a few months because the college had to close down, so he was doing remote learning. And since he's 22, I put into work doing all the yard work. I couldn't get time. So, we texted. We said he's going to edit his resume as another, because he gives most of the credit for that work. But knowing all the beautiful yards in town, all over the place, I was really impressed and appreciate. Surprised, really. But thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Jen. City Attorney Brooke?
No comment.
Thank you. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda for this evening. May I have a motion, please. Alderman Widener?
Yes, I'd like to request to remove Item H from the agenda, and with that, a motion to approve the agenda for the August 3rd, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second, Alderman Wilson?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Speak up. Identify yourself and speak up.
Mayor, are you talking about an opinion on that motion? Are you talking about what we've taken off?
If you agree with it being taken off, I guess. Or yeah, or if you have another comment that you'd like to make. Okay, everyone good? We can vote. Mayor, roll call, please. Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Vivier?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda as amended has been approved for this evening. We have four sets of minutes that also need approval. May I have a motion for that, please? Alderman Widener?
I'll move to approve the minutes of the July 20, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting, to approve the minutes of the July 20, 2020 City Council Closed Session Meeting Number One, to approve the minutes of the July 20, 2020 City Council Closed Session Meeting Number Two, and to approve the minutes of the July 27, 2020 Public Safety and Finance Committee Regular Meeting.
Second, Alderman Wilson?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments by anyone on those minutes? Please identify yourself and speak up. Hearing none, I have a roll call, please. Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Vivier?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener? Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. I will read down the consent agenda for this evening. Item 6A, Accept Staff Recommendation Waives Second Reading and Past Ordinance 02020-28: Decreasing the Number of Authorized Massage Establishments Licenses from Seven to Five. B, Accept Mayor Brummel's Recommendation and Past Resolution R202045: Extending the Duration of the March 16, 2020 Declaration of Emergency until the Adfirmment of the Next Regular, Special, or Emergency Meeting of the City Council. C, Accept Staff Recommendation and Past Resolution R2020-46: Approving a Facility Use Agreement with DuPage County Clerk's Election Division for Use of City Hall to Serve as the polling place for the November 3, 2020 Election, Subject to the City Attorney and City Administrator's Review and Approval of the Agreement. D, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation Waive the Competitive Bidding Requirements in Past Resolution R2020-47: Approving a Contract in the Amount of $218,981 with Train U.S. Incorporated for the Design and Installation of the Warrenville Garage Make-Up Air System. E, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Adopt the Modified Work and Confined Space Policies Effective Immediately. F, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Establish a Community Relations Task Force through December 31, 2020, authorized to assist in creating a Community Relations Commission. G, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Appoint Mayor Brummel as Chair of the Community Relations Task Force, and Alderman Widener as the Council Liaison, Both Terms Expiring on December 31, 2020. I, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Adopt the revised Remote Work Policy. J, Accept Mayor Brummel's Recommendation and Approve the Appointment of Charles Sicarus to Fill a Commission Vacancy on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission for a Three-Year Term Set to Expire April 30, 2023. K, Receive and File Minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission Regular Meeting Held on February 25, 2020. L, Receive and File Minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission Regular Meeting Held on June 11, 2020. M, Receive and File Minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting Held on July 23, 2020. N, Receive and File Report of Invoices Paid Up to July 29, 2020 in the Amount of $64,057.28. O, Authorized Expenditures for Invoices Due on and Before August 17, 2020 in the Amount of $121,666.88. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as read, please?
Alderman Widener moves to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Alderman Wilson approves.
Okay, Mayor, roll call, please. Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Vivier?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda as amended has been approved. We will return to Item 6H. Alderman Widener, did you wish to make that motion, or would you like someone else to make it?
Mayor, I'd appreciate... I respectfully request that maybe someone else would make that motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to make the motion?
Alderman Goodman? Hi, I would like to make a motion to recommend that City Council direct staff to include $100,000 for the Hotel Tax Grant Program and suspend funding temporarily for the Aesthetic Enhancement Program in the fiscal year 2022 proposed budget.
Second, Alderman Davalos? Okay, we have a motion in a second. We'll go to discussion, and we'll begin with Alderman Widener, because he was the one that asked to have this removed, and then we used the regular order. So, Alderman Widener, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. My purpose with pulling this off is to support artists and public art. And after reading this evening's packet in the minutes from the last TAC meeting, I'm not... I'm a little bit uncertain if that agenda item was fully addressed and discussed. And after last week's discussion regarding the temporary suspension of the aesthetic enhancement program, it prompted me to do a little more research. And there were many articles that I found, just by Googling "community art during a pandemic," that appeared. There are articles by the New York Times, other sites, Oxford Health, sites from Harvard, and they all addressed art as being very important to the community during times such as these, during a pandemic. And they seem to discuss that art has the power to shed light on the problems that we're confronted with at this difficult time, and artists in communities need the power of creativity and art now more than ever. And around the country, I think there's a lot of efforts by communities to create art and include their community. And I just kind of picture this funding maybe being parted out to an 80/20 or something, so that we could have an existence of the aesthetic enhancement program that might look a little bit different than what we've seen so far. Wouldn't necessarily have to be a contract that would go to a sculptor, that would then work with a foundry to develop a mold for a single-piece sculpture. It could be something that included school kids, a lot of community members, and things like that. A couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to see the power of art in Minneapolis, as people were using, like, nine-foot-wide pieces of canvas that were attached to a fence. And there were lots of people that were participating at safe distances, of course, painting murals. And it was this kind of thing that seemed to help people heal and brought people together to communicate and share feelings, all at a safe distance. So, I know the TAC group meets again August 13, and maybe they could have an additional discussion on this topic if they had one already, I'm not sure, and provide the council a little guidance and address how to keep art projects active and moving forward, even as we physically isolate ourselves. So, I would move to table this item until after the TAC committee could address this topic. I don't know when we would bring it back, sometime after August 13, at a date to be determined, so that we could hear their thoughts on this recommendation, and so that we could keep the arts projects going. Because, you know, I know events are important in the community, too, but as it stands right now, I can't picture a lot of public events taking place because of the proximity to other people you would need to be involved with. So, it seems like there's a... There is an opportunity to forecast some public art and support artists during this pandemic time. So, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Widener made a motion. Does anyone wish to second that motion? Identify yourself and speak up, please. The motion was to table to a time on certain.
I have a question before I could vote on that.
Okay.
I need to maybe hear from Alderman Berry.
Alderman? Alderman, we need a...
This is Alderman Davalos.
I know. We need a... We need a second to the motion in order to talk about it. Is there a second?
Oh, I thought we seconded already. Okay, Alderman Davalos, I second.
Okay, we have a second? Okay, just a minute, Alderman. Okay, just a minute, Alderman. City Administrator Coakley.
I want to clarify something. If I remember my Robert's Rules, which I'm terrible at, a motion to table, there's no debate. I believe he's looking for a motion to postpone this discussion until TAC makes a recommendation. So you could still have a discussion and then have more of a time certain.
So the motion to table does not have discussion?
Correct. I have to defer to the attorney in that, but that's however, call it from the past.
Okay, Brooke. City Attorney, please.
I'm unmuting myself. Maybe Alderman Widener could clarify his intent. Are you, is your intent to table it indefinitely or till a date certain for further discussion?
To give the opportunity for the Tourism and Arts Council to discuss it at their August 13 meeting and to maybe develop a recommendation to the city and give their thoughts on continuing the aesthetic enhancement program to some level of funding. So it could either be a postponement or it could be a motion to table.
Well, a motion to table.
Again, City Attorney, how should that be worded then?
City Attorney Leniman, the motion to table is not debatable. So if there's a second, there would be a vote. And if it was tabled, there would need to be a motion to bring it back for consideration. If the motion is likely to continue the item until another date, you know, like a date in September or something, then that could be seconded and discussed. So it's really up to Alderman Widener to decide what motion he wants to make.
Right. Alderman Widener, do you want to clarify which of those two options?
I would welcome the council's discussion on this item. And so I guess according to Attorney Leniman, I'm looking to postpone?
Right. To a future date, maybe in September.
Yeah, and I guess I would rely on City Administrator Coakley to give me the best available date to bring it back to, for discussion.
Okay, so the clarifying aspect of the motion is that it's a postponement, not a tabling, and we need some sort of an approximate date, City Administrator?
I would suggest then just postponing until, I think it would be okay. Attorney, can you correct me again? If postponed until after the Tourism and Arts Commission meets and can make a recommendation, perhaps in September or October. There's one clarifying thing, I think too, it might be easier if we deal with it now. There's two parts of this motion in my, or two parts of the original motion in my view. One is about the TAC Hotel Grant Program, which there's a workshop coming up in about two weeks, which you need to answer about the budget and amount you intend for the fiscal year 21. The other part that we're talking about is the aesthetic enhancement program, which there is no urgency, as I understand it, to make a decision until the budget process. So I think we want to be clear that the entire motion might be separated into the aesthetic enhancement program that you want to postpone, if I may, and the other part of it about the workshop and the TAC grants, which you would want to go ahead and vote on tonight so that their group has a direction for their workshop this month.
This is Alderman Barry. Can I make a comment, please? Good. Thank you. The meeting on August 13 is a workshop. It involves the people who will be submitting grants for the upcoming year for FY '22. And so there will not be a meeting per se of the commission itself. The next commission meeting will be in September. And at that time, the booklets, the three-ring binders, are presented to the TAC Commission to start working on the grants. Now, we will not be discussing the enhancement program until February, when we have completed the process for all of the grants that will be submitted. So there is no emergency at this time to worry about the enhancement program. The enhancement program should have been discussed in, in March, in April, in May. Unfortunately, we didn't have meetings at that time. And so really, we are behind. And that's one of the reasons, too, that the TAC Commission did discuss this at the last meeting, and they agreed that we would have to push this forward because we just don't have the time to do it. Part of the workshop that will be conducted on the 13th will be to tell the people that come there also that they are going to have to find other ways to create new ideas on how they would like to have an event in Warrenville. I know Alderman Widener is recommending that, you know, we have to safely distance, but he's recommending a public event with canvases on fences where people will gather. So I don't know if, if, if that's a good idea either. But we have to look at what the people that have the ideas, what they bring forward in their grant applications. And that's what we will start to do in September. Because those applications are due at the beginning of September. And then we will receive the booklets in the middle of September. So right now, we cannot do anything at all at this time regarding the enhancement program. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a motion to postpone. We have a second for that. City Administrator has pointed out a slight fly in the ointment here in that the motion has two parts, which we need to address at some point. But let's go through the Alderman and get comments and then see where we're at on everything. We can always go through with the vote on the motion as presented and then present another motion to handle the part of the motion that has been presented that is time-sensitive. So we have one that's time-sensitive, one aspect, and one aspect that is not time-sensitive. So let's, let's go through the Alderman and react to the motion that has been presented to postpone. And then we can maybe sort things out and move ahead. So we'll begin with Alderman Ashauer.
Nay to the postponement. I think that the reasoning behind, behind it was sound when it was given. The, it's budgetary concerns, it's people not ready with projects. This is probably the year to put things off.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Barry. Anything to add to your comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Vivier.
No comment.
Okay, Alderman Davalos.
Yeah, I've been off the audio here, so I didn't hear anything that's happened in the last three minutes. But whatever happened to the, I need to have somebody tell me, whatever happened to the TAC money for 2021? And that just got dropped because obviously everything that we voted on, when was it, January maybe, whenever we voted, didn't happen. So that money just wasn't spent. Is that correct?
Assistant City Administrator White will address that question.
Thank you, Mayor. The fiscal year '21 TAC grants, which totaled about $135,000, some of that will be spent this year for a variety of reasons. Some events will continue. Many of the Historical Society events do not require social gathering and can be done with social distancing. There are some other events that don't require large gatherings. Things like the WIB beautification efforts don't require any sort of gathering. So a lot of those types of programs will continue. I have been talking to all of the different groups and trying to get a feel from them as to any decisions they've made about the fiscal year '21 programs that are still upcoming. And it looks like there will be some savings, but it's not going to be a substantial amount. It looks like at least $100,000 to $115,000 of that $135,000 will likely be spent by the time this year is over.
Okay, Alderman Davalos, is that helpful?
Yeah, I didn't hear what Alderman Barry said about what, I know it's a workshop on the 13th. And I don't, I don't even, I may have to abstain from this vote because I missed most of the introduction to it. But it seems to me that we got some of the most amazing people on TAC and around the community that we should be able to figure out something that can happen that will let art come to the rescue of a lot of us. And I think there's so, there's so many small inexpensive things that can happen. And we don't have to talk about all that now, but as Alderman Widener said, it doesn't take long to find a lot of it. And it seems to me that the city has done such a good job of thinking outside the box on this whole COVID thing in many areas, but we're not doing it on this. And I just am disappointed, I guess, that we can't use some of our resources, especially people and ideas, to make, give people some hope. People are losing hope, especially people that are struggling in a financial way. And, and a lot of, you know, it's in our local community. And I'm just, I know I sound, I'm just a little brokenhearted that, that we aren't doing anything in that respect. I mean, we're, everyone's being safe and luckily we are postponing water and sewer bills and we are doing things. But I just don't think, I think there's other things we could do that would make people smile as they drive around or there's an art project here. Or you could use the high school kids and junior high kids. And I don't have all the answers, but I just think we fell off on this one to say that there's absolutely nothing that we can do for art enhancement in this community. And I, you know, I bet you could do something for $3,000 to $5,000. We just cut all those branches off the tree on Potavium Butterfield to go grow them somewhere and get them, I don't know. So I guess that's all I have to say. I'm just disappointed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Goodman.
I am a tremendous supporter of arts in Warrenville. I have been involved in the arts programs in Warrenville for my entire life since I was a very small child, helping my mother run Art on the Prairie. And I think that our arts community in Warrenville is very strong on many levels that don't all involve events. When I think about the Warrenville and Bloom projects that have already been discussed this evening by the City Administrator, the City Clerk, and how that brings our community together because of the art of gardening and the arts of, you know, creativity, that people can just put a display up in their yard. I think that's a form of art. I think that when we talk about the TAC grants, we associate that with maybe the concerts on the commons and events that involve gathering. But it's so much more than that. And if we do get applications from the many wonderful people in our community that want to have some funding in this next grant cycle for a public art event the way that Alderman Widener or Alderman Davalos have described, I think that that could be wonderful if they can come up with some creative ideas of how to do that in a safe way during the pandemic. And I hope that TAC will give those ideas their support and consideration as they deem appropriate. And I think that that doesn't necessarily mean that this $60,000, you know, public art program, you know, putting a statue up in, in front of the police station, which is the most recent use of that program, is not exactly the same scale or the same thing. And the two things don't have to do with each other. Postponing a public art project now, as much as it saddens me to not be supporting more artists, especially local artists, in this difficult economic times, I think it's a very reasonable financial decision for our city when we're trying to cut back on a few dollars in a very difficult time for us with our budget. And if not putting $60,000 into building the statue this year allows us to refrain from laying off or furloughing one city employee, then that seems like a good decision to me during a pandemic, which is why I support the original motion. And I don't think that we should postpone this until after TAC discusses it some more. We do have in our packet the recommendation from TAC, which I believe was to reduce the hotel grant funding and suspend the aesthetic enhancements. I know that Alderman Widener said he was disappointed not to see the TAC discussion of that in the minutes. But if you'll notice, the TAC minutes that are in our packet are for the June meeting. But the recommendation says that it was from the TAC discussion in their July meeting. So maybe that will clarify things for Alderman Widener. TAC did discuss this. Perhaps we don't have the minutes of that here. But we do have the report from Assistant City Administrator White and from Alderman Barry, who told us what happened at that meeting. And the TAC recommends this action. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. We'll go to Alderman Chrisell.
Thank you. I would agree that with Alderman Ashauer and Alderman Goodman, I think that the reasons that were brought forth to remove this were solid. And the fact that the Tourism and Arts Commission agreed and recommended this, I think that postponing this doesn't, doesn't have any value. They've already weighed in, right? So I'm not in favor of postponing this. I am in favor of the original motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson.
My first comment is, seems to me that the council several, a little while ago, when we were discussing the whole budget, TAC wanted us to appropriate funds two years. They, we had been giving them $30,000 a year, and then they indicated that they needed preferred $60,000 every two years. So they had time to get an art institute or an art project and then have it funded during that year. So this is totally out of the same prospect of what TAC does with all the local things. So I think this is totally separated from what we've been talking about, having small art gadgets. We still have $100,000 for TAC to work with. But this was set aside as a unique individual with the aesthetic enhancement. So we were only appropriating it every two years, $60,000, rather than $30,000 each year. So I'm not even sure that this whole discussion has to do with this aspect of TAC or their ability to have any kind of artwork or displays or functions or whatever. So I'm against postponing this. I think it's a legitimate motion that we made and voted on before. And I think that we should just keep this and not go back through the same process again. And I really question whether or not all the commentary had anything to do with the aesthetic enhancement program that we voted on before.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. We've heard now from each Alderman at least once. Does anyone wish to make additional comments? Please identify yourself and make a comment.
Alderman Davalos, I just want to say something really quickly. I'm not interested in adding more money onto this $110,000. And I don't even really, I'm not interested, I guess, to postpone. I think TAC has told us what they need and they want. What I'm interested in, and it won't be a voting item, but maybe Alderman Barry can take this back, that maybe out of that $110,000, we can't find $10,000 or some, if people, not as many people are going to apply, something that we can, you talk about a tourist thing. Oh, my gosh, you're talking about enhancing your city, that we can't find, put a few thousand dollars and let them talk about it and think about it and research what other communities are doing that we can take out of that grant program. I mean, it's not just for events, I don't think. I don't want to use the art enhancement, the $60,000, all that. I'm fine with waiting on all that. But I just would like to plant, you know, a voice in the ear of TAC that, don't forget how powerful art can be and how, how a difference it can make to disillusion people and sometimes a disillusioned community. And I just would like to send that message. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else wish to speak up again? Attorney Youngman, we have a roll call, and this is a vote on the motion to postpone. Alderman Davalos.
Nay.
Alderman Ashauer.
Nay.
Alderman Chrisell.
Nay.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Nay.
Alderman Barry.
Nay.
Alderman Goodman.
Nay.
And Alderman Vivier.
Nay.
Great, motion fails. We are. Great, motion fails. We are back then to the original motion, which I'm going to read again to make sure everyone remembers. Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and direct staff to include $100,000 for the Hotel TAC Grant Program and temporarily suspend funding for the aesthetic enhancement program in the FY '22 proposed budget. That is the motion. We have a motion and a second already on record for that. I will again go through the list of aldermen for additional comments at this point on the issue, beginning with Alderman Ashower.
No comments.
Thank you, Alderman Berry.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Devere.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Davelos.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Goodman.
Just to thank TAC for their hard work on this program.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Chrisell?
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Widener.
Thank you. I do appreciate all of TAC's work on all their projects. I thought there might be room for additional discussion on one of their upcoming agendas, a possibility. I'm disappointed that the aesthetic enhancement program will be temporarily suspended. I think we lose momentum on the arts when we do things like this, and I wish we had some way of promoting the arts in the upcoming fiscal year, and I hope that happens. And I agree with all of what Alderman Davelos had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, and Alderman Wilson.
Nay.
Okay.
Did you hear that, nay?
I did. This was an opportunity for comments, so I'm guessing we can figure out how you're going to vote on that. So now it's time for the roll call. Thank you. Anyone, one more time, identify yourself to give an additional comment, just one last shot. Okay, everyone, if there's a chance, may I have a roll call then, please? Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Nay.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Devere?
Aye.
Alderman Davelos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashower?
Aye.
And Alderman Wilson?
Nay.
Is that a nay? Is that an aye, or a...? Nay, okay. Motion carries. Thank you for thoughtful discussion on an important item. We'll move on then to the regular agenda. I have a seven a, would someone like to make that motion, please? Identify yourself and make the motion.
This is Alderman Goodman. I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance... Does it have a number? 02020-XX, authorizing the temporary suspension of city code sections 7-4C-6, 7-4C-8, 7-4C-10, and 7-4C-11 regarding delinquent water and sewer accounts through September 30, 2020, and direct staff to revisit the new moratorium prior to the expiration to determine if another extension is needed.
Second, Alderman Devere. I'm sorry, wait a second.
It was ordinance number 29. I see it in a different place.
Thank you. Okay, the correction has been made on the motion, so who was the second again, please?
Alderman Devere, second.
Thank you, Alderman Devere. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of this issue? We'll go through the motions again of the list. I keep forgetting, we have to do that every time. Alderman Ashower?
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Berry.
No comment.
Okay, Alderman Devere?
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Davelos.
I'm just wondering how this goes with the weekly report that said there was, I don't know, 50-some shut-offs threatened and that were turned off, and then everybody but two people paid or something. Are we just starting over? After we did that, then we're starting over with a new month that they don't have to pay this month, or is this, I don't understand the policy, I guess.
Okay, let's get a clarification from the City Administrator. John?
Thank you. The council voted on April 6 of this year to do this action, suspend water and sewer utility shut-offs and penalties only through June 30. The staff was following that direction and went ahead and proceeded as, well, I was going to say normal pre-COVID times, did issue the shut-offs, shut off some of the utility accounts, and that was the information you saw reported. So most of the people have paid what they owed. We offer payment plans and other ways to try to help them with those payments. The question came up during our enterprise EMRP, the Enterprise Maintenance and Replacement Program meetings to plan for the future, when Alderman Wilson and Goodman asked about that and suggested that we want to bring this back, because the economic crisis related pandemic is ongoing, and that we should consider not shutting off for a longer period. So that's why it's on. But for one month, we were back to pre-COVID times and doing those shut-offs, and this would reinstitute the suspension of those shut-offs and penalties.
Thank you very much. Yes, that's a point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I was pretty much just going to say what Administrator Cokely just summarized, that we had a discussion about this at the EMRP work group, and I was a little surprised that the shut-offs had started again, and I thought that other aldermen might be as well. So I'm glad that staff is recommending that we continue bating delayed fees and then putting pause on shut-offs during one of the most difficult economic times that we've had to deal with, and I hope that all residents will be able to continue having clean water from the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Chrisell?
One quick question. So this is until September, September 20, end of September 2020. So is it possible that we can revisit this again sometime around that time, so we don't have that overlap again, if we are going to maybe extend it out again? That'd be my only question.
That may spark a sense of need. City Administrator?
Yes, that is our intent, to bring you back the recommendation before this one relapses. We didn't, fortunately, or for whatever it's worth, staff didn't anticipate having an extension, so otherwise, we would have wrote it back in June. We will bring it back in September, so there's time for the council to do that, make a decision before it lapses again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Alderman Widener?
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Just one comment. I noticed that as of Friday morning, 53 of the 55 account services had been paid up. So it worked, and we should look at it again under the circumstances, and look at it again in September. We need to give all the help we can to our residents. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, Alderman. So we have a motion then, and a second. We have a roll call, please. Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashower?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Devere?
Aye.
Alderman Davelos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We have nothing under unfinished business. We have nothing under new business. We have no need for an executive session this evening, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Alderman Goodman, I move to adjourn.
Alderman Davelos, second.
Okay, thank you, and we have to do everything by roll call in this session of the meeting, so may I have a roll call, please? Can you get it? Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashower?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Devere?
Aye.
Alderman Davelos?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. We are adjourned. Thank you for your attention this evening, and we'll see you at the time.